We'll start this morning at the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. I'll start by asking for approval of this morning's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next I have is approval of the minutes for October 31st, 2018. Regular meeting and 2000, in October 31st, 2018, Department head meetings.
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion as second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next I have is approval of claims for the payment date of November 7th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 7th claims for payment.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next we have set date and time to receive bids on 1992 Ford F-150 pickup truck.
I don't have a date to set. I'm kind of concerned if we do it too late, it might be frozen to the ground if they have to have a removal. And I would just assume put it off until spring.
Okay.
Would too.
Okay.
So...
Move to table.
Alright, I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion as second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Are you going to contact Megan on that?
I'll speak with Megan, yep. Next I have is the Auditor's Monthly Report. Auditor Laura, anything to add? It's a beautiful morning, right? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the county auditor's report of fees collected in the amount of $1,745.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
Well, it's October.
Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next I have a change of status with the Sheriff's Office. Matthew Bryce has been, has turned in resignation paperwork. He was permanent part-time. Last day of work was November 1st, 2018.
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion as second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next would be consideration of a resolution changing the status of the county attorney from part-time to full-time. This time I'll go ahead and ask Attorney Meyer to come to the podium and he can present. His fine needs. Nope, you're fine. Thank you.
First I want to thank the voters of the county for turning out yesterday and casting their vote, voting their conscience and for supporting me. I look forward to serving as your elected county attorney. And congratulations to those that also won races here locally and beyond our county. In support of the resolution, I've prepared some notes here and primarily focused on not just adopting the resolution to make full-time, but by law you have to set an initial full-time salary. And we're getting close to when the Compensation Board is going to be doing its work, but by law we need to make that decision today if you adopt this resolution. So, the last annual compensation review utilized a report prepared in December of 2017. And the methodology that was employed in that report did three things. One, it established a baseline salary for each of the county officials adopting the statewide average salary for each of those positions. Number two, it established a percentile rank for Hardin County by comparing Hardin County to the five counties above and the five counties below in areas such as population, tax revenues, land valuation, levies. And then it also considered what was happening in the county's contiguous to Hardin County. And then three, it allowed for an across-the-board increase for inflation or cost of living. That's how the present salaries for our current county officials was set. And that report in 2017 concluded that the salary for a full-time Hardin County attorney should be $92,844. Now that number is, whether you call it inaccurate or, I guess, subject to some interpretation because that report set the baseline at $85,825 because that was the statewide average. But that average is skewed kind of low because it included 30 counties that have part-time county attorneys. And so if you, if the study had compared or used the average for only full-time county attorneys, that average, the baseline would have been $100,000, $100,413. Now, even I think that's probably an inappropriate number. But even, even if that was used, the current budget could absorb that amount. But I'm, I'm not requesting that. I think that, I think that would be excessive compared to other counties of our size. So what I tried to do by honoring the methodology that the board adopted and that was used in this compensation report was to give a weighted average based on, including those part-time, you know, the 30 counties that have part-time county attorneys. And so with that weighted average being, you know, two to one, full-time to part-time counties, that weighted average that the study should have used as a baseline would have been $88,666. And then employing step two and step three of that methodology, the compensation recommendation would have been $95,864. And so that's what I'm requesting, or I think would be a fair number. Certainly the board can do whatever it wants. But I think that's fair because it honors the methodology that was employed in setting the current salaries. It's fair to the current officials that are benefiting from that methodology. I'm not asking for any special treatment. And actually, I'm actually going lower than what the methodology may have actually called for if it would have just considered full-time positions. So that's what I had to report for the board's benefit.
Okay, thank you. I was, had the request, some law enforcement officials in the county wanted to speak on this resolution. I'm going to wait until the discussion part of the resolution to allow that, so...
Back when we, back when we first appointed, we had the intent of moving this to a full-time position. And it could not happen until after the election was done by Code of Iowa. And then there's a deadline. What is that, March 1st, if I recall? There's only a timeframe we can do this in.
There's a, I believe it's a 70-day window.
And along with this resolution, there's a 60-day mandatory waiting period unless the elected county attorney and the Board of Supervisors would like to waive that, correct?
That's correct. Iowa Code 331.752 subsection 4 says that the 60-day mandatory delay can be waived or avoided if the board and the affected attorney, which would be me, agree to waive that and do it sooner. And I am agreeing to do that if you are and I'm requesting that we go ahead and move forward without any delay.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution changing the status of county attorney from part-time to full-time. Dollar amount being $95,864 and be effective immediately.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion as second. Discussion at this time. Would the public like to interject anything? Okay, at this time, I know law enforcement, anybody like to speak on behalf of the resolution? Come on up, Sheriff. Thank you.
I 100% support this going to a full-time position. Daryl and Chris and his staff have been doing a fantastic job at the time that they've been there. I know recently Daryl and I both reached out to the Clerk of Court on some filing, a caseload that Hardin County, I guess in a sense, creates, for lack of a better term. We keep, we keep his office busy to say the least for county population size. I know we submit a lot of criminal complaints. We've got very proactive law enforcement throughout the county. And with that, the availability of walking over to his office and having an attorney there has proven to be incredibly beneficial. He's going to focus on the citizens of Hardin County and the justice here versus a private practice and that type of thing. So moving forward, this being full-time, I think is going to certainly benefit the law enforcement community, but all the citizens of Hardin County as well. Or at least the law-abiding citizens of Hardin County. The others might not be too happy, but oh well. So that's my two cents.
Alright, thank you Sheriff.
Thanks Dave.
Chief Ludwig, anything to add?
I just want to...
Come on up.
I just want to just basically, you know, jump on the bandwagon with Sheriff McDaniel. I think the county attorney's office is doing an excellent job since they've been here. And like the county, Eldora gives them quite a bit of caseloads too. So they're doing fantastic and I am all for it, full-time and the wage that is proposed, so 100%.
Good, thank you.
Thank you Chief.
Thank you.
Chief Sheaman.
Well, I know our department's very thankful. We're stuck up in the corner and outstanding, call them day or night. I guess I think on the wage, maybe split the difference at $100,000. We don't want to lose him. And if you look at the charts that I've looked at, he's, he's right there, you know, and that's night and day. And we're very thankful for what we have. So I think that, you know, if it's a 104, that was the, you know, the formulations that you, why not bump it to $100,000 and call it good? But you're worth every dime to my tax dollar that I pay, so can't thank you enough.
Thank you Chief. Other discussion. Yes Julie?
So, so we would have a full-time attorney, then part-time attorney, how does that work out?
Yeah, we have, Daryl, I'll let you address that.
If I understand your question, when they make the position full-time, I'll be at full-time. Then we have one full-time assistant county attorney, so we'll be at two attorney offices. Currently the budget allows for the county attorney's position being part-time with two full-time assistants. But we believe, I think we've shown that two full-time folks can get the job done.
Yes Jessica.
And then hide behind the podium. Since you've come here, Daryl, you've just done such a bang-up job. It's just been wonderful working with you. And I want to ask, have you been putting in part-time hours? You don't have to answer. I wanted to actually draw attention to the fact that since you've stepped into the door, walked through it, you have been putting in full-time and beyond. And while you haven't been appropriately compensated for that, the appreciation runs deeper than you can ever know. And there are times as an elected official that we need to reach out to you for county business. And I think people forget that you're not just a prosecutor, that you're here to advise us as well. And sometimes we, we don't have as pressing of an issue, but yet you get back to us in such a timely manner that I feel just as important as any case that you're prosecuting or need to put attention towards, no matter how minute it is. So I just really want to extend thanks and appreciation to you for that. And whatever the results of the resolution are, I'm super happy to see you get a raise because it's about time that you're paid appropriately for what you've been doing all along, so...
Thank you.
Thanks Jessica.
Yes Donna.
Question.
Yes.
If, if before it was a part-time attorney with two full-time assistants and will now change to one full-time attorney and one full-time assistant, what is the difference between what was budgeted before and what will be budgeted now?
The current budget for part-time county attorney and two full-time is $192,000 plus. It's somewhere a little north of $192,000. Currently, at the part-time salary for my position and one full-time is at $55,000, we're only spending $118,000 of that. So this increase of approximately $32,000 gives us plenty to, plenty in the budget to work with.
Yes.
What was the total of that? $118 and $32?
Right, $118 is what we're currently spending for attorneys. And if they increase this as requested, it'll be an additional $32, give or take.
It will be about $150,000.
Correct.
So that will create a savings of approximately $40,000.
Correct.
Chief.
If you stayed with the motion that's on the table, $95,000, let's not forget about Chris. You know, I thought, well, then maybe they need to take that other money because we're at 104. We use what the board adopted and make it available to have Chris receive some more compensation. They do an outstanding job. And that's what I was thinking of. County attorney does, if he wants to stay at that, to give the other guy some extra.
Daryl, I'll let you address that.
That, I do have intentions of requesting a change of status for Chris. He did buy a home in Iowa Falls and he and his wife are going to start a family and make Hardin County their permanent home. So we want to reciprocate and, you know, acknowledge that with, and the work he's doing with some additional compensation. So I'll be coming back in the near future to make that request.
Is Chris the assistant?
He is.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Concluded discussion.
The only comment I would make, I know you made the comment about, you know, giving more at this point in time, which I, you know, I'm not opposed to. But we'll be meeting with the Compensation Board here within the next month. So I think we'll just leave the, you know, any adjustments to this, we'll leave up to the Compensation Board.
I appreciate the, the kind words and...
We don't want you to leave some other kind of paper or something.
Well...
And if that's happening, so...
I've made Hardin County my home and I do have a strong sense of public service. And so I'm not, don't get me wrong, I'm not, I like to get paid, but I'm not doing it. I'm not doing it for the money, I'm not doing it.
Lance, anything else?
I'm good now.
Okay. Nancy, I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote.
Lance?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
DJ?
Aye. The next thing I have is a motion to extend an appointment of Attorney Daryl Meyer as Hardin County Attorney to the time of being sworn in as a duly-elected attorney.
This may seem, I can comment, this may seem somewhat odd that now we're doing this after we've just passed that resolution. But the motion that was passed on May 23rd appointed me through the canvassing of the votes. And that will take place on the 14th of November. Iowa Code, Chapter 69.14A says that I would become the county attorney once I'm sworn in, which has to take place after the canvassing and then the certification of the election, then I'm sworn in. I understand that might all be able to take place on the 14th. But in the event that it can't, there's going to be this awkward, could be an awkward gap between when the May 23rd motion runs and I'm actually sworn in. And so I thought this motion would be appropriate just to bridge that gap.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to extend the appointment of Daryl Meyer as county attorney to the time of being sworn in as the duly-elected attorney.
Second.
Discussion. Nancy?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next time we have is one of those topics that nobody likes to discuss, but it's been brought to our attention that we need to evaluate the policy for transport of human remains. So on occasion, when we have a deceased person in the county, we rely on the local funeral homes to come and remove the body, whether it's from a motor vehicle accident or a home, a nursing home. And so we were informed recently that the policy and the dollar amounts haven't been adjusted in several years. And a couple of the funeral homes asked that we reevaluate those figures and discuss adjusting that from 2011. And so currently, the removal of a body, that rate is set at $125. And then transportation of that body is at a dollar a mile. And then preparing remains after an autopsy is $75. So I've just entertained any discussion from the board on how to make this not, not a burden to a funeral home that would have to come out and take care of a deceased in the county.
Well, I, I have a copy of the old policy here and that was passed July 6th of 2011. So I, I definitely think we need to be increasing the fees. The way I understand too, from some of these places, it's, they operate at a loss or, you know, kind of a break-even type thing, so...
Or they roll the extra expense to the family.
Right, so...
Would this be something that we could call the local funeral homes, get some current market pricing on those things and bring it back for review and change of the policy?
Yeah, maybe just kind of a survey. Yeah, I would, would not be opposed to that, yeah.
Okay.
To pull a meeting together with them and then go through this again for updated numbers.
Correct, yep, okay.
And then do we want the resolution itself to be looked at or our policy? Is there anything we want to change in that?
I think there was a couple of things that could maybe be updated. And I think, I don't know if Daryl has gotten an opportunity to look at this at all, so I'd kind of like to have him look at it also.
There, I'll give you a second.
And, and also get the opinions from the funeral homes at the time that we asked them regarding fees to see if there's things that they could recommend too.
Okay.
So I would try to set up some time, hopefully this year, yeah.
Yes.
Do we want to meet and try to meet with all of them? That might be kind of difficult, getting them all together. Or do we want to just come up with some, or somebody come up with a survey that could be sent to them?
I'd be more than happy to reach out to them individually and give them the same standard set of questions and bring back the data to this board. And also provide them with the policy that we currently have so they can see what the standard of care for the deceased is and see what the methodology, when there is an autopsy, what's the standard operating procedure, getting them to the crime lab in Ankeny for that autopsy and how the transportation back to the county would work and who's responsible for that.
Okay.
So if that works, I can reach out to the...
Yeah, that would be fine.
County funeral homes, okay.
Bob?
Just a question. Does the county always pay for the bodies to be picked up?
Not always.
Do they always have to pick up the bodies, or...
This is mainly when there has to be an autopsy done.
Even if there's an autopsy done, they would always pay for that and it wouldn't be like the person's concerns or person responsible for that or nothing? The county always pays for it?
Dave?
I was at MEI for quite a while. I think where this typically applies is for an out-of-county fatality accident or there's not a known next of kin or something like that. But I think if it's from a home or a motor vehicle accident, what's the funeral home that takes over care after the autopsy, I believe, that's oftentimes assessed back. You know, the autopsy, I believe, is on the county.
Right.
And maybe the transportation too, but I think a lot of those are, if we have somebody come and pick, that's picked up from a home and that family requests, you know, a certain funeral home, I don't, to my knowledge, that's not being assessed to the county.
Okay.
Maybe that should be made clear when this...
Yeah.
Right.
Because that would be maybe clear.
Because part of, part of what's in the policy that struck me out is that the county, let's say you are, your, your body's taken to the crime lab in Ankeny for an autopsy. Some of the language in here would make it appear that the county is then responsible getting that body from the Ankeny Crime Lab back to the county.
Or to another county.
Or to another county where...
If that's where they resided.
So definitely we need to clean up and make some clarifications. But also knowing if the deceased has to go across state lines, then there are some other, I mean, I don't know if we want to be in the business of transporting bodies either. So I think we need to get the expertise of our funeral directors. Yes Donna?
If it's across state lines, doesn't the family normally contend a local funeral home and arrange for transportation themselves?
I'm not sure how, how it works. And then, you know, if you have an indigent person, so...
Those are some of the things that we need to research or, you know, find out.
They're all great questions because it seems like these, you know, circumstances happen more often than not. Yep. Yeah. So, okay. Next I have is utility permits and secondary roads. Taylor?
Yeah, we try to lighten the mood.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank everyone for voting last night on the lost funds. I know that would, it'll definitely help my department. So hopefully we can start fixing some of these bridges. You guys know how many, it's ridiculous amount of number that we have. Speaking of which, we do have two of them right now that are going to start getting worked on their dead-end roads. So crops are out, you know, so we're going to start working on those quick. Our other two roads, the road closed sides are still up because the ground's wet, but it's pretty much ready. So we're just kind of playing the wait-and-see, trying to keep traffic off. We finally started getting our new motor graders last week, so should get another one this week and the last one next week, so...
Good.
It's pretty exciting to finally get those coming in.
After how long?
Since May. It's only four months late, we're fine.
Motor graders, road graders. Okay, anything else?
They're made in Brazil, so that probably explains what it takes so long.
It takes eight months to get a converted van. It takes eight months to get a converted van.
I don't need any of them.
We did.
Alright, at this time I'll ask for any public comments. Other business? Lance?
Yeah. Last week, we kind of skipped over that, but.
I'm sorry.
One of the things that I'd like to address as the Board of Supervisors, these Facebook pages that are out there, we only support the county Facebook pages.
That's what MICA operates, right?
Yes.
There's a couple. I don't operate them all.
Okay.
There's a, like, a, there's a Hardin County Auditors one, there's a Sheriff's Facebook page, there's a Conservation Facebook page, there's a General Facebook page. That's the big four. There was an Emergency Management one, but I think that's gone by the wayside. And then there's the Friends of Hawkins that's operated by the Friends of Hawkins, Hawkins Organization. I don't have anything to do with that one.
Okay. I just want to point that out.
Okay. Renee?
I agree. Anything that is related or presented by the county departments.
And MICA, who, so when you talk about who has control of the county's Facebook pages, Twitter.
The Twitter.
Who has, who has access to that?
So the county Facebook page, right now, is me. I'm the only person to post to that. Jessica, did I give you rights to it? We talked, not, I'm sorry, not Jessica, my employee Jessica Sheridan. We've talked about it because she helps edit our website. I don't think I've opened it up to her yet, but it's something we've talked about. We basically kind of limit who has access to it because we kind of try to have just that singular voice, and since I edit the website, what I put on the website is automatically, certain parts, like news items, are automatically put on the Facebook page, other things I add manually, so it's just easier if one person kind of controls the voice. The auditor is managed by the auditor of the sheriff, and page is just managed by Dave and I. David publicly do 95% of the posting on that page. I have the rights to post to it, but I don't. Same with the Cock, or Conservation. It is Davis Horton, Wes, and myself, the director, have the rights to post on there. Davis Horton, who works out at Hawkins, does, I think, 95% of the posting on that page. So it's always a county employee with the approval of the supervisor or the supervisor itself, themselves, that take care of it. So anytime that there's a discussion about if a department wants a Facebook page, I certainly don't have any authority to say no, but I do talk to them about what kind of information they're trying to put out. A lot of departments just don't have enough news, and we don't want to have every department with their own Facebook page, so that it kind of thins out what I put on the main page. And so usually, it's just a discussion, and I'm more than happy to put almost anything that a department wants put on the Facebook page, and I'd rather try to funnel everything to the same place, so it's kind of one-stop shopping. The worst thing you can do with the social media is be dormant for long periods of time, and then people kind of forget it even exists, so you kind of got to manage it so it stays relevant. The Twitter is tied directly to Facebook. I don't even usually post, I'm not sure I've ever even posted anything directly on Twitter for Hardin County. It just pulls what I post on Facebook.
Okay.
It pushes it out to Twitter for those people that would rather get their new information through Twitter. We don't have a county Instagram account or anything like that. It's just Facebook and Twitter and the website.
Okay. Good to know. I had one thing. Oh, go ahead, Donna.
So basically, what you guys are saying is just because it says Hardin County, much like Daryl said, doesn't mean you condone or support.
No.
That type of Facebook page.
Correct.
Exactly. We can't control it. We can claim.
Doesn't mean, and doesn't mean just because our county government is listed as a related page, doesn't mean you want it there.
Right.
Yeah, and how does that happen?
So part of what, when we have a page, this is not a closed group, okay? So this is not like, sometimes people create Facebook groups because they have a shared interest, and there's a moderator, and you have to have approval to be in the group and all that. This is a Facebook page, a public page, so we're using this as just a way to put information out in a, in a manner in which people want to receive it. People are on Facebook, we want them to see our stuff, because they're not necessarily going to go type in hardincounty.gov and go search out what's going on in the county on our website. So we want to push information to where people are getting their information. But it's a public page, which means anybody who has a Facebook account can see the posts that we put on there. That's why we want it. We're a public entity, we want public information. The downside of that is, because we're public, just like our website, people can link to it. It's out there. I see other organizations share Facebook, Hardin County's Facebook posts all the time, whether it be an individual sharing about a job posting, or a political party sharing election information. It's just the part of being a public face, we can't control that, just like we can't control what entities are going to decide to go look at our website or link to our website. That's part of being a public entity. The best that we can do is monitor discussion that happens on our page. That's the only thing we can control, and we do that very, very limited, because it's a private company. Remember, Facebook is a private company, so we have to follow Facebook's rules, okay? So that's the other thing. It's important for everyone to realize, we're deciding to use a private company's social media structure, because a large majority of our constituents are on Facebook, but we can't control where people link to it. The best we can do is put information out where they're saying, this isn't from us. And when something's listed as a related page, that's totally a Facebook thing, like, it could be Hardin County, something ridiculous, but then it says ours is also called Hardin County. It just links the two together. The algorithm, the algorithm that Facebook uses says, hey, these might, if you're interested in this, you might be interested in this. Private companies, mathematical algorithm, how people are interacting in this space.
MICA, do we have any kind of a disclaimer on our website, and is that anything we'd want to do?
Our website?
Or not website, on our Facebook page? That we can put a disclaimer?
We can do it in the About section. I mean, we do say this is the official, and we have our address listed as the courthouse, and the phone number is, probably, probably Jessica's.
And anyone that links to this page is not?
I don't know if there's a really great place that you could put that, because of the way that interaction happens between posts. We could put something on our main page, but that doesn't mean anyone's ever going to see it unless they go to our page.
Yeah, true.
So we can do something like that, yeah. And there's things that we can, we've classified ourselves as a local government. I mean, Facebook tries to put you in a category, and so we're in that category, but there's always so much you could do. I think it just kind of goes back to how the internet works. It's a little bit of the Wild, Wild West out there, and the best you can do is try and control your message, but you cannot control when you're a county, local government, public-facing entity, there's limits to what you can do if you're having a public space or public information out there.
The important thing is that people know that our county government does not support or condone some of those pages.
Right. And I would even go so far, it hasn't really come up in the last several years, but when we first got like a Facebook page or website, you know, we wanted, I've been approached by organizations to share something or to promote something, and I'm very careful, which is one of the reasons we don't have a lot of people that can do this. I try very, very hard as a voice on Facebook to wear my county hat, and if you look at the interaction that Hardin County does, we don't like very much. I don't think I like anything, like, in terms of an organization.
Especially not.
I don't share, you know, if I share something, usually I'm sharing another, like the sheriff's Facebook page, or maybe something from like the Secretary of State, another government post. So there's very little interaction. Because of that, we don't want to look like we're favoring one organization, or one nonprofit, or one political party, or one business in the county over another. So we're very careful, you know, it keeps our interactions very minimal. I see Facebook as strictly a pushing out information that, you know, format where people are getting their information. I'm just using it as an avenue to put my news in their face. There is a little bit of discussion that goes on. We have more experience on that on the sheriff's page, because some of the things that the sheriff's Facebook page posts is just frankly a little more sensational, interesting than what gets on the main Hardin County page. And we have had a few cases where we feel like we've had to monitor things, but we've never really limited discussion. And then I would commend Dave, he does a very good job of, I see some of the conversations, people can message, the page is just like they message an individual, and so it's just one more avenue. Someone's really into Facebook, and that's how they communicate, having the ability to use Facebook Messenger and communicate with the county through Facebook, because that's how the constituent wants to do it. It's one nice way to provide feedback, and I can tell you that the most common thing I see is people approaching the sheriff's office that way, and Dave is very good about getting back to them and giving them information that they need in a very professional manner. So, you know, our job in local government is to try and communicate with our constituents and citizens in whatever manner that we can try and reach the most people, you know.
In what legal manner, on any other post, does the county have authority over?
Any other, like, page?
Yeah.
No, nothing. It's Facebook's page, it's the administrator of that page. And I don't have any experience with this, but my understanding is the best you can do is make a complaint to Facebook, and I don't even know what that protocol is. But I know that would take time, because I'm sure that stuff does not work at the speed of light. Daryl knows. So, I know there's way, I mean, there is, I know things get taken down on Facebook all the time, but we have not ever, and part of it is, you know, who has the authority to make those decisions for the county? I mean, this could get really deep and philosophical. I'm an employee of the county, I work at the will of the Board Supervisors, who themselves are elected. It's not the Board Supervisor's Facebook page, it's the county's Facebook page, so.
And I don't see the county attorney getting involved in that. I mean, if somebody has an issue with a Facebook page, that's between them and Facebook. We're just stuck in the middle.
And that's why I take a very conservative approach of the information we put on there, because just like our county website, it's the voice of the organization of the whole, not any one elected official or any one department. I'm not speaking for any, you know, any one part of the county, it's just, it's an information portal. We serve the public, we have things that the public needs and or wants, we want to make sure that people can find the information they're looking for. Any other questions?
No. With that, I can ask for a German.
You make a motion, is it? Oh, all right.
Move for a German, excuse me.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.